Welcome to the regular meeting of Blacksburg Planning Commission, which are held here in the Rotary Hedges Path Chambers of the Blacksburg Municipal Building. On the first Tuesday of each month, citizens may address the Planning Commission during specified times on the agenda and are requested to adhere to the following. Please speak at the podium, state your name and address, direct comments only to the Commission, please limit speaking time to a maximum of three minutes, and speak only once during a specific hearing or comment period. A wireless microphone is available to anyone requesting the assistance, and please silence all cell phones, show respect for all speakers, and allow all opinions to be expressed in a tolerant atmosphere. With that, we'll call the meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Britt.
Here.
Mr. Erman. Mr. Ford.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Kasoff.
Here.
Mr. Cassie. Ms. Reinhardt.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Here.
We have a court.
Great. Our consent agenda tonight is comprised of four items, the first of which is the approval of the Planning Commission minutes from May 6, 2025. Proposed action is to approve. Second item is CUP 25-1, the Graham Outdoor Recreation Camp Conditional Use Permit Request at 2190 Merrimack Road. The proposed action is to schedule a public hearing for July 1, 2025. Our third item is rezoning 25-4, Yellow Sulfur Apartments PRD Rezoning Request at 3503 Holiday Lane, and the proposed action is to schedule a public hearing for July 1, 2025. And the final item on our consent agenda is zoning ordinance amendment, ZOA 60 Ordinance 2001, an amendment to amend the text of the town zoning ordinance to create a new downtown northwest zoning district for the area bounded by North Main Street, Turner Street, and Prices Fork Road. And the proposed action there is to schedule a public hearing for July 1, 2025. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on to our public hearings for tonight, of which we have two, the first of which is rezoning 25-2, the Clyde's View Planned Residential Zoning Request from R5 Transitional Residential to PR Planned Residential at 103 Jefferson Street. And we have a staff presentation by Matthew Sampa.
This is a request to rezone 0.655 acres at 103 Jefferson Street from R5 Transitional Residential to PR Planned Residential. The request has been brought by the applicant Balzer and Associates on behalf of the owner, Shaw Development LLC. Following the work session, the applicant revised the application to include two additional proffers reinforcing occupancy standards and committing to solar-ready home construction, the replacement of the open space patio with a flexible community space, and update to the water line and stormwater plans, a request to remove sidewalk requirements alongside the parking lot, and the addition of utility easements behind all units. And here's an aerial of the property outlined in blue. The development includes 10 detached single-family homes with 20 bedrooms total, featuring open space patios, bike racks, and parking for 20 vehicles and six bicycles. And here's an updated aerial of the proposed development. Rezoning requests are evaluated for the conformity to the comprehensive plan, the relationship of the proposal to the general planning program of the town, and whether or not the change furthers the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the community, the need and justification for the change, which is the applicant's burden to prove, and the effect of the proposed change on the surrounding neighborhood and public facilities. Site's future land use designation is medium-density residential, which allows up to 20 bedrooms per acre. The proposed development sees this with a density of 30.5 bedrooms per acre. This map shows the future land use designation of the parcel and surrounding area. The site is located in an urban, walkable neighborhood. Additionally, the passive future identifies Roanoke Street as a future corridor for sidewalk and bike lane improvements. In the zoning ordinance, there is a statement of purpose for each district. The PR District allows flexibility for applicants to determine the best standards that meet the intent of the proposed development and the district purpose. The intent of the district can be met in a number of ways. In exchange for flexibility, the application plan and proffers are binding. Any substantive changes will require the applicant to amend the PRD through the public hearing process. Here's a map showing the current R5 zoning of the site. In the zoning ordinance, there are three types of regulations that govern new development. The planned residential district allows an applicant to propose most of the district standards, but use and design standards and development standards still apply unless modifications are specifically requested. District standards apply to all development within a particular zoning district. The existing and proposed standards are found on the table and in the staff report. The applicant is proposing a four-foot front and side yard setback and an eight-foot rear yard setback. The proposed density is 30.5 bedrooms per acre, which exceeds both the R5 zoning and future land use limits. However, occupancy will be limited to a family plus one unrelated individual or no more than two unrelated individuals, standards that are more restrictive than R5 and have been formalized through a proffer. The PR District requires a minimum of 20% open space. However, due to the project being less than two acres, the applicant may apply for a reduction in or asking for a 13% open space. The applicant has replaced the patio with a flexible programming area to be managed by the HOA as discussed at the Planning Commission work session. There are no use and design standards for single-family housing. However, staff recommends that the two ends should face east Roanoke Street and not the internal root space. The zoning ordinance requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit. The applicant is proposing 1.1 spaces per bedroom and two spaces per unit for a total of 20 parking spaces. There is no bike parking requirement for single-family detached units, however, the applicant has proposed six spaces. Buffering is proposed along the parking lot as well as the northern and southern boundaries of the units. Town engineering staff review requests for rezoning for impacts to public utilities to determine if the existing infrastructure has capacity to support the additional development. The water line alignment in the parking lot, or the water line alignment in the parking lot has been revised per staff comments. Development is projected to generate 1,900 gallons per day of wastewater, which will connect to an existing six-inch sewer on East Roanoke Street. A revised stormwater management concept plan was submitted by the applicant and has been A variance has been requested from the standard 15-foot public utility easement requirements. Instead, a 7.5-foot private drainage and utility easement is proposed behind units 1 through 5, and a 7.5-foot PUE behind units 6 through 10. Utility conduits are included at the rear of each unit to allow for future private A new sidewalk is proposed along East Roanoke Street, but the applicant is requesting a variance from the required four-foot planting strip due to steep topography. There are currently no existing sidewalks on either side of the street. Additionally, modification has been requested to remove the requirements for sidewalks along the sides of the parking lot. Here's an updated master plan showing the utility easements behind the homes and revised Currently, waste management includes 10 trash carts located in a screened area near the end of the parking lot. However, staff recommends that a proffer be made for a private contractor service, and if the service is in, the development must provide containers for town pickup. Here you can see a list of the modifications that the applicant is requesting. And here's the updated proffer statement that includes the added proffers assuring occupancy standards and constructing the homes for solar readiness. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff? All right, here in them, we'll move on to the applicant presentation, Balzer and Associates.
Good evening. Steve Simons with Balzer and Associates, AD College Street in Christiansburg. We're pleased to be here tonight to present Clyde's View, which we feel is a creative way to provide some for-sale housing, single-family housing near downtown. We talked about this a lot at our work session meeting. We tried to think of ways that we could do something unique, do something creative, and provide some density in a walkable, bikeable location to downtown, and in a way that we hope, based on the project as we've got proposed right now, will set these homes at a more modest price range than we're seeing around town in our more traditional subdivisions. So it's kind of the gist of why we're asking for what we're asking. And as Matthew was doing the presentation, I know we've got several variances and exceptions we're asking for. And as we've talked about a lot, you know, over the years, some of those start to, some of those design requirements and design standards, development standards, start to pinch us in more urban and more dense-type projects as we have presented here. So what I wanted to do tonight is just briefly go through the project itself and some of the changes that Matthew has touched on. As you see, we've got 10 units that are off of East Roanoke Street there. The parking is all off of Jefferson Street, 20 parking spaces, 20 bedrooms. One of the things we talked about at planning, at work session, was the open space and how people live in this community. Part of what we wanted to do with the home designs that we have, which are kind of a farmhouse cabin style, each have a front porch that will front each other as you go up this common green, which is kind of the lighter, lighter green you see there. So we hope this will engage the community with their neighbors and create that sense of place within this neighborhood itself. The parking, as we said, is removed. It's off of Jefferson Street. We felt two spaces per unit was adequate. We did talk about guest parking a little bit. Jefferson Street does have on-street parking on the left-hand side of your screen there. There is no on-street parking on East Roanoke Street, so just to be sure everybody's clear on that. We talked a lot about public utility easements as well and the variance requests that we had for that. So what we did, we went back and looked at, Mr. Connor with Shaw Development has already had some conversations with electric and with Comcast, or electric and fiber. So we do have a layout from electric to show how the conduit would be pulled, and electric would be pulled into the site and run to the back of the units. We looked at doing a seven-and-a-half-foot public utility on both, on the rears of 1 through 5 and 6 through 10. We do have our stormwater management outfall pipe just on the left side in the rears of one, units 1 through 4. So we didn't want to put a public utility easement over a private drainage easement. So that's why we have a private utility easement up one side and a public utility easement up the other. The biggest piece for water and sewer extensions, though, is there in the middle of the site. So again, you can see water and sewer running parallel to our center sidewalk. So if those lines needed to be extended up to page north, they'd be able to do that through our common space because we have a public utility easement through that whole section of common space right there. That just shows a little bit of context of the site, and again, we talked about that. We have apartment buildings, we have duplexes, we've got single-family rentals, so it's a mix of residential uses there. We have the cemetery, obviously, across the street. And again, this is within a five-minute walk to downtown, to midtown, to most of the shopping. So very walkable, very bikeable. These are the homes that are proposed. We looked at these the other day as well. Again, very modest, a little over 1,000 square feet, living room, kitchen on the main floor, and then two beds and two baths on the upstairs. Those are just the rest of the elevations. We had a lot of good conversation a couple weeks ago. We're excited about this project. It's a small project, but again, each little piece, especially on infill projects like this, we feel helps that overall goal of trying to get some new housing types in town. And again, a lot of the basis for what we looked at on this is similar to what the town has gone through, as we touched on with the small lot ordinance, you know, allowing some extra density, allowing some smaller lots, some smaller units, to try to, you know, offset some of those heavy construction costs we're seeing right now by being able to cluster our development together. So we're excited about this. We're happy to answer any questions Planning Commission has.
Questions for the applicant?
Did you guys end up covering the bike parking?
We did not cover the bike parking. We did, you know, as Matthew mentioned, we did remove the patio that we had a lot of discussion about, and we left that open. So if they wanted to do more bike parking, as Mr. Kasoff mentioned, do some more bike parking or possibly some storage out there would give them the ability to do that.
So what is solar-ready?
So Kevin can speak to that, too. He did have a conversation with Baseline Solar as far as getting cost to go ahead and do solar on all these, which was running about $25,000, so to do solar on each of these homes. So we did not propose to do that to keep our initial cost down. But that would basically be having the panel, everything set, and running the conduit up to the top of the roof structure, so you're not having to tear through walls.
So all infrastructure, all structure is accounted?
Everything would be there so they can punch in and go.
And just to double-check the roof line, your conversation with Baseline indicated that the roof direction was appropriate for solar.
Right, yeah. I mean, you're kind of, well, you can see, well, you can't really see our north arrow in that picture because it's in the shadow of that tree. But we've got south facing on the back sides of those units, page north, page north through south.
When the proffer says substantial conformity with what's offered, do those elevations more or less predict?
They would.
How they'll look?
Yes, sir. We might change some colors, some little things like that, but yeah, we're not going to come in with a different style home.
Additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we open the hearing to public comment. If anybody would like to address the Commission on this particular public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the-
Could you, I'm sorry to interrupt. Your name and address, please.
Oh, I have to give that before I say hello to you all? Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Jade, S-C-A-J-D-E, and I live at 401 Clermont Drive, which, incidentally, is right in the neighborhood of this development, so I know something about the vicinity. Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission, and members of the public, and my friends from Balzer and Associates, I'm going to present a couple remarks that apply to my next testimony as well, so I don't have to repeat it, and Mr. Ford's already heard it. I have students for neighbors. I worship with students, I sing with students. Some of my student neighbors are better than the neighbors who've lived there for a long time. So I'm not against students, but I'm going to say some things related to students. First is, who is actually going to live in this development? It's close to downtown, walkable to downtown, bus-able to downtown. I suspect it's going to be very attractive to students, almost an attractive nuisance. How do we assure that once it's developed, the HOA doesn't allow it to simply become a bunch of rental properties and become a student slum? Parking on East Jefferson Street? That's a joke during the academic year. There are some spaces there, but they're filled by the people in the similar development across the street, so I don't think that's a realistic possibility. Hooray for the bike parking. I came here by bike tonight, and I appreciate when bike parking is built in the plans of a development or a downtown building. Trees. It's nice they've left a few trees in. They demolished some really good trees, and I thought that was an act of vandalism, and I'm not happy with that. So I think that you should reconsider whether or not they should provide the planters in the parking space as well, because we need more tree canopy. Everybody's ripping trees down, nobody's building it back. Finally, I didn't hear any designated affordable units, and I know the town council's concerned about this, I'm concerned about this. I'm happy my property has gone up by $100,000 when I, since I moved to Blacksburg, but I'm real unhappy for people of modest income who want to live in Blacksburg, so I hope you will address this issue. Thank you very much for listening to me, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify before you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the Commission on this particular public hearing? Going once. Okay, great. That will move on to motion and discussion. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of rezoning 25-2, with the stated proffers and the modifications as requested.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the topic?
I think that this is a cool development. I certainly acknowledge the speaker's, the public comment that this could become student housing. I also live very close to this development and have been impressed by the residents of the newer development right across the street, maybe not impressed by the residents of the adjacent development. But, you know, I think that this is providing what has become, you know, commonplace to say, missing middle housing, smaller units, albeit not detached, or attached, smaller units that could, without subsidy and without being committed affordable housing, appeal to people who would otherwise not be able to afford to live in Blacksburg. And I'm hopeful of that. You know, the market will determine it in the end. But I'm excited for a new type of housing, one that I know will increase the variety of housing that we have here by providing two-bedroom units. And I think it's a cool thing to add to our town, and I hope it turns out great.
More discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second on the dais. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
As opposed? Great. We'll move on to our second public hearing for tonight, which is rezoning 25-3, rezoning amendment request to RZ 24-2, Ordinance 2062, which was approved in March of 2025 for the property around 801 North Main Street, Cambridge Street, Winston Avenue, and Progress Street. Companion to that is the right-of-way 25-1, companion request to rezoning 25-3, to vacate a town-allowed alley and additional right-of-way. And we have a staff presentation by Kenzie O'Shea.
The two requests tonight will be presented in a single presentation, but will be acted upon separately by Planning Commission. The first item we will be covering is the request to vacate approximately 5,000 square feet of an existing town-owned alley and other right-of-way. There is an existing alley that runs parallel to Cambridge and Progress Streets that exits onto North Main Street at a curb cut near the Speedway Gas Station. This is an aerial image showing the location of the alley and the other two rights-of-way areas near the corner of Progress Street and North Main Street. The application exhibit shows the three areas to be vacated, which are highlighted and circled in red. As a reminder, this is the portion of right-of-way that was vacated with the previous request. Alley currently provides access to the rear of commercial properties along Cambridge Street, Winston Avenue, and Progress Street. There are no residential uses with access to the alley. However, these properties are subject to the rezoning request and will no longer be in commercial use if the rezoning request is approved. The alley does not provide access to any other parcels. It is separated from the Speedway Gas Station by the retaining wall. Finally, we will review the overall rezoning request. There are a number of properties involved in this rezoning request and a number of individual property owners. The applicant is LV Collective and is the contract purchaser of the properties. The total rezoned area is approximately 3.1 acres, including the area of right-of-way to be vacated. Currently, there are a number of buildings with a mix of uses, including commercial and warehousing, as well as vacant buildings. The amendment request includes the former Speedway Gas Station parcel, which was not a part of the previous 2024 request, which was approved earlier this year. The rezoning area is shown in blue, and this does include the areas that is subject to the right-of-way vacation request and the Speedway Gas Station parcel. At a glance, the amendment request is the addition of the approximately 0.369-acre Speedway Gas Station parcel, with the addition of up to 110 bedrooms for a total of 869 bedrooms, an addition of 56 residential parking spaces, and an addition of 18 commercial parking spaces. This is the revised application that was presented, the revised concept plan that was presented in the application, showing the parking garage entrances here, and here, and here. The last two parking garage entrances are entrances to the residential portion, and the first parking garage entrance is the entrance to the commercial entrance. Townhome area remains unchanged from the approved rezoning request. There is additional commercial area that is located along North Main Street here. As a reminder, Section 1151 outlines how Commission should review all rezoning requests. The comprehensive plan, future land use designation, is split between commercial and medium-density residential. The comprehensive plan, commercial designation, does not contemplate residential density. However, residential uses are allowed in the implementing zoning districts. As a reminder, there are a number of competing goals and policies within the comprehensive plan as it relates to the proposed request. The parcel is located in an area designated for mixed use with student housing, even though it is designated commercial on the future land use map. The planned residential district allows up to 10% of the gross land area to be developed with commercial uses. The applicant is proposing more than 8,000 square feet of commercial space, which equates to approximately 6% of the total PR land area. This image highlights the commercial areas in red and the plaza space in green. The lobbying and leasing area is also on this level, in the remaining space along North Main Street. In the zoning ordinance, there's a statement of purpose for each district. The PR District allows flexibility for applicants to determine the best standards that meet the intent of the proposed development for the district purpose. The intent of the district can be met in a number of ways. In exchange for flexibility, the application plan and proffers are binding. In this instance, because the new application includes a parcel that was not part of the original application, an amendment to the PRD is the most appropriate course of action. The current zoning is PR Planned Residential and GC General Commercial, as you can see on this map. In the zoning ordinance, there are three types of regulations that govern new development. The planned residential district allows an applicant to propose most of the district standards, but use and design standards and development standards still apply unless modifications are specifically requested. District standards apply to all development within a particular zoning district. The existing and proposed standards are found on the table and in the staff report. The applicant proposes a zero setback on all sides. However, the building will be set back from the back of the sidewalk by a landscape area. The proposed setbacks and height for the amendment remains unchanged from the prior approved request. Open space is required as both a district standard in the PR District and as use and design standard for townhomes- design standard for townhomes and multifamily. A minimum of 20% is required. The amendment request includes additional outdoor terraces for residents, as well as indoor space, such as lounge and fitness areas, that exceed the minimum standard totaling at least 25%. Use-in-design standards govern the development of a particular use in any zoning district. The use-in-design standards for multifamily uses are intended to provide an attractive, street-oriented development with appropriate connections and open space. Most of the use-in-design standards for townhomes pertain to a physical appearance and the layout of units. The intent is to provide a more single-family appearance than that of a larger monolithic multifamily building. This is the view of the multifamily building from Progress Street. You can see the building articulation and change of materials and color to break up the facade of the structure. In this image of the townhome-style units, you can see that they appear to be three-story units arranged side by side and retain a more individual unit appearance than the multifamily building does. The parking standard of 1.1 parking spaces per bedroom accommodates resident-plus-guest parking and is typical of student apartment living where unrelated individuals occupy bedrooms. The PR district standards allow an applicant to propose an alternate standard. The applicant's justification includes proximity to campus and downtown and an adjacent bus stop. The amendment adds a proportional number of bedrooms and parking spaces, and so their parking ratio is unchanged in the amendment to the rezon. The applicant is proposing nearly double the minimum parking for bicycles. The amendment request includes two bike rooms on the ground floor of the multifamily building, holding at least 420 bikes total. Additional bike parking is provided outdoors near the townhomes, and some of this bike parking is covered. Landscaping is required to be provided per the zoning ordinance. The amendment shows appropriate parking lot landscaping, street trees, and overall landscaping concept for an urban-style development. Signage should be evaluated for its appropriateness to the development and the surrounding area. The applicant has proposed a signage plan as part of the application. This slide shows several excerpts from the signage plan, showing several different types and sizes of proposed signage. Development standards require that sidewalks meeting code must be installed where they do not exist today. Although there is existing sidewalk on some of the street frontages today, none of it has the required four-foot vegetative strip. The zoning ordinance requires that the applicant construct a new sidewalk with the vegetative strip or request a modification to the standard. The applicant has requested a modification not to require the four-foot vegetative strip and instead simply install the five-foot sidewalk immediately against the back of the curb along the street frontages within the new development. Sidewalks will be wider than five feet wide along all frontages within the development. The stormwater concept plan has not been approved. The applicant and the town are still working to resolve and refine elements of the stormwater concept plan and the floodplain analysis that remain unresolved from the May 15th engineering memo. Town public water and sanitary sewer service serve the site and are adequate to support the development. The amendment includes the relocation of a transit bus stop from North Main Street to Progress Street, as requested by BT, to better facilitate operations. There are two modifications, as outlined in the staff report and seen on the screen. The proffer statement includes proffers for substantial conformance, maximum building height, a parking policy for residents, occupancy restrictions, a proffer for the proposed signage, a proffer for building energy efficiency, and lastly, a contribution to the town's affordable housing fund. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have of either the rezoning request or the right-of-way vacation.
Do you have a sense of how far apart the town is with the developer on the stormwater?
Our stormwater engineer can better answer that question for you.
Hey, Coffee.
Coffee Howard, town engineer, stormwater. So we are working with the process. We have seen their first amended flood study. We had some comments. Our third-party reviewer looked at their comments and got them back to them. So we are, we have a good handle on where they need to go and where we want them to be. So I'm pretty confident that we can get where we need to be before the end of the public process. It's just it's a very complex flood study. We're glad to have the opportunity to really detail some things that we weren't able to detail the first time, that we have our third-party specialists that really understand the nuances of these types of flood conditions. And so it's just a long process that we weren't able to get everything lined up by this particular public hearing for the flood study. Any other questions about?
In common language, there's no deal killers in this memorandum. You'll get through.
No real killers in that memorandum, absolutely not. It's simply getting, kind of moving towards a common understanding and agreement of the conditions at the site and the future conditions at the site.
Anything further for Coffee? Thanks, Coffee. Appreciate it. Any additional questions for staff, Kenzie, or engineering?
Do the, is, do the additional bedrooms suggest we should revisit the question of traffic study, or is everybody thinking that's not a problem?
The applicant did resubmit their traffic information, and there were some new recommendations that came out of that as a result of the new bedrooms. And one of them, I'll go back to one of the designs. One of them includes the, kind of a lane modification here that would allow only people to turn right out of this. It still allows folks to turn left-hand in, but only right in and right out.
Does the Speedway explain why there are so many more bedrooms now?
Yes, the acquisition of the, of that, you know, two-thirds of an acre parcel was allowing them to construct more bedrooms over top of that site.
Kenzie, at the work session, it wasn't, or at that time, BT was preferring them move the bus stop off North Main Street to Progress Street. And I thought it was a little fluid as to whether or not that was going to happen. Are we at that, where the applicants agreed that that's where the bus stop will be now?
Probably a better question for the applicant, but I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything further for staff? Great, helpful. All right, we'll move on to the applicant presentation by Forsight Design Services. Well done.
Good evening, thank you. Chris Johnson, LV Collective, here representing the owner. With me tonight, Mohammed Mosin, our architect from House Bolden, and Mr. John Neal of Forsight Design. We'll try to make, does this work? Strategic growth, we've seen and talked about this a number of different times in the location, and that's why we're here. Like to get past that. And again, the study of the, the study of the neighborhood as it stands with really a telling story about the number of single-family homes that are currently occupied by non-owner We also are aware, as most of the people in Virginia Tech, about the on-campus housing that has recently stalled. This is an overall site plan showing the point, I think it was close to .4 acres, with the consideration of the addition of the alley space that is closer to half an acre. So if doing the math, you'll see a proportionate to the number of beds that be housed as has been placed on the remainder of the site previously and approved. We've gone through this one time before, but it, you know, the best way for us to go through a project is to have it one pass straight through. The ownership or the availability of this lot was not clear to us until further into the process. I'm happy to answer more questions, but we've gone through the timeline once previously. So we'd really like to share our strategic vision and why this improvement was able to be made to the site. What it really allows is the release of some of the tight dimensions that were north and south on the site. It allows the relocation of the stormwater and the efficiency of the parking. We note the 1,800-square-foot building that was currently being used for retail and servicing the fuel station for Speedway. We have looked at that and thought a good use of that space would be things that we heard in the last, the last approval, which were, you know, enhancing Main Street, adding additional retail, and adding additional outdoor space. So all of those accompany this, as well as growing our parking to try to accommodate additional retail visitors. I think we're somewhere around 225 square feet per parking stall. As you can see, we've also added 135 additional feet of linear commercial frontage. Our open space plan does show us closer to the 28% open space, which would be eight above the code minimum. And a notable 4,200 square foot of that open space is exterior open space and used for the public. There are additional interior open space at about 5,100. Those are interior to the development, as well as the total open space of about 12,100 being added to the site. Quick understanding of the parking, we had mentioned before, adding tandem spaces to the design with the efficiency of the garage being helped. Those are highlighted in yellow. The first two floors are just in the lower left-hand corner, but as you get to the upper area, thank you, as you get to the upper area, we were able to provide more and continue to look for opportunities. These tandem stalls you see quite often. They're not a part of the parking count technically, but we did hear and hopefully responded to as adequately as possible the idea of people who bring their cars but then need a place to store them for long term. A quick summary to that, we did increase modestly the technical parking ratio, but have been able to increase up to 0.55 with the tandems included in that, and a total added 84 stalls for this particular addition or expansion shared between the different uses. At this time, I'd like to invite up Mr. Mohammed Mosin.
Thank you. Mohammed Mosin, architect with House Bolden, representing our team today. I'm going to run through a couple of things. Chris talked about the parking. I think when you look at the proposed versus what is at the top right, which is what was in the original package that was approved prior to acquiring the Speedway parcel, you can see that it's become a lot more efficient. You know, drive aisles versus parking spaces between the two, you can see a lot of efficiency that we've gained. This shows the storm channel shifted closer to Main, as Chris had indicated. On this level, really not a lot has changed, aside from getting the efficiency on the parking. All the entries, the pedestrian, the bike room off of Web, across from Web Street, remain the same. So we've kind of capitalized on all of the things that we've discussed to keep the layout efficient, and we were able to add more parking. One big thing that was done here as well was the access to the channel. Instead of it coming in from North Main, perpendicular to North Main, it got rotated, and it's now coming in parallel to the, to the channel, which that helped provide more of a frontage on the next level up along North Main. It kind of expanded our active use along North Main. Initially, it was kind of bisected by that service alley between us and the Speedway. Now that we have expanded, we kind of turned that around, which gave us a lot more transparency and active use along North Main. Entries on and off the parking remain the same. What you're seeing is parking right behind the highlighted areas, which is the leasing office amenities and the retail, is public parking, and it's got a very convenient connection that comes out to the outdoor plaza that we've created. This is the vehicle entry up and up there. We've got a pedestrian connection to the newly-added plaza, which is a lot more inviting compared to more of a tunnel or the breezeway that we had previously coming in between the leasing and retail. Parking, again, a lot more efficient. This top level of parking, Chris talked about the tandem spaces. And then there was a question about the residential and how we picked up some units and how we added the beds, and I think this graphic shows it really well. This is the typical residential, actually, this is the first residential level, so this is where we have all of our courtyards right above the parking. We've got the pool deck right at the intersection of Cambridge and Main on the bottom right. And you can see compared to what we had previously, where we've gained a lot of that density. It's really on that, on that parcel that got added with the Speedway. That was the bulk of how we picked up the additional beds for this, for this building. And that's just a typical layout. Back when we started looking at this project and trying to understand the massing, we had looked at the downtown northwest zoning ordinance that was proposed at the time. I think it was being discussed with planning commission and city council. And we tried to use that as a guideline to figure out, you know, the building envelope and where we put the density, where we put the massings. We tried to kind of layer that envelope that we understood coming from that draft ordinance to try to locate the setbacks, the setbacks along the perimeter. And the dashed red line kind of gave us that, and we used that throughout the process to try to stay within that building envelope and create these breaks along the, along the street edges, create the step backs, and break the scale of the building down. So you can see on, on this building section here, especially that middle one, North Main being on the right side, and then the townhomes being on the left side, you can see how there's a gradual, or maybe should call it like a height transition that happens from North Main. First, we've got the tall retail, the two-story height retail. Then you got to step back. You've got the residential. Even at that point residential, there's only four stories over, over the parking. And then as we get a little bit further, we start to pick up that fifth level. And then when we get to Winston, we start to step back down using the three-story townhomes across the street, and then transition from there back to the residential neighborhood to the west. These are some of the wall sections or street edge sections that we provided. This is, this is what was approved previously. And then you can see here, we've kind of maintained that same approach in terms of stepping it back and starting with four stories and then picking up that fifth level a little bit further from, from North Main to, again, break the scale down. Couple of quick renderings, that's the last thing I've got to run through. This is the intersection of Cambridge and North Main. This is where the café is at the corner. You see a lot of transparency at the street edge. This is kind of the North Main facade. And materials that's being used at the base is mostly masonry, so very durable material, a lot of glazing, a lot of transparency. Now, all the program here is active use, whether it's retail or leasing or lobby, it's active use as opposed to what we had initially with, with a portion of North Main. So this, this right here is a focus on the front door, the entry to the lobby. You can see how we've, you know, attention to detail around the entries and the signage and the canopies. And this is the plaza here. So we've got, we've got a little bit more, more of an inviting plaza at this point. So this, this here compared to what we had previously, top right corner is where you see the Speedway station, we're able to, you know, I think we've made a lot of improvements and related to provide that active use and the, and the glazing. We were, we had parking screening behind the station that's now replaced with, with active ground-level retail. This is the view from the plaza, looking at some of the commercial space. Zoom in on the commercial space. And then this is the view from Progress and North Main. Again, we were able to extend the building a little bit closer to North Main, hold the corner at the intersection a little bit better. The shape of the building and how we broke the geometry along North Main gives us all these breaks, so it kind of helps break up the, what potentially could have been a very long facade. It kind of breaks it into different chunks. It feels like it's different masses, and so that helps with, with the scale. And then lastly here, we, we compare that to what we had approved originally. We worked between our work session and this time, we worked on the corner a little bit more. We, we got some positive, we got some good feedback from, from staff on articulating the corner a little bit and adding more glazing, and we're able to kind of work the units to have a living room at the corner, and that helped us get a little bit more detail at that outside prominent corner. And then I'm going to transition it to Chris, he's got one last slide.
Make this very quick. Where our sustainable proffer remains the same. Our affordable proffer has increased at the same amount as we offered in the first round, so we've increased by nearly 160,000, breaking the total closer to 1.3 million. The diagrams at the side sort of show you before conceptualizing and then after, if that helps visualize the, the use of the land. We feel like it was done successfully to try to keep as much of that open to the public and really enhance the public realm. So we appreciate your time and consideration tonight.
Questions for the applicant? For another ground?
We are aware of the bus stop, and we are in favor of its re-.
Questions?
I remember the cafe was already matched to a particular vendor, is that still true?
Yes, that is true.
And then are, are the additional commercial spaces, do you have particular vendors or types of vendors in mind for those?
Yeah, we, we do have, I mean, we always have, we welcome, you know, many different types of vendors, but we prepare for anything, and we find that helps us strategically with the idea of bringing in a tenant very quickly. So, these will be outfitted for restaurant, fast-fresh, other types of retail. And, yeah, so that's, that's our approach for this one.
So, you added about 4,000 more square of, more square feet of commercial space with the amendment?
Yes, I think it's almost 4,000, it's in the 3,000s, but yes. We've, we've shifted a little to get the, the approach from the garage out to the main public here.
We're roughly in the 8,000 square?
Eighty-two hundred.
Eighty-two hundred.
Yes, sir.
Great. Any other questions for applicant? All right, we'll move on to public comment. If anyone would like to address the commission on this particular public hearing, please do so now. Good to see you again.
Good to see you again. Do I need to introduce myself again?
I, I think we know who you are now.
Okay. Thank you again for listening to me. I have not been involved in the process for this development for one reason. When it first came out, it looked highly appropriate and quite reasonable for the area. Unfortunately, the developer has not taken externalities into consideration, but paid lip service to them. You represent the town, not the developer, and it's your responsibility to consider all factors. And the key factor here, I think, is external, factors over which neither you nor developer has any control. The developer did mention that VT can no longer meet its responsibility to provide on-campus housing. So, that would suggest maybe we need more off-campus housing. And I say, no, we need to stand up to VT, because the Board of, the Board of Governors has done a rather bad thing, if the growth of VT can be considered a given. But that's the other externality. The Trump administration has declared war on institutions of higher education. I personally know people who have lost grants at VT. I know therefore that VT is going to be losing income to support its, its indirect costs, and that's going to affect the overall cost of operations. I also know that the effect of the Trump administration's war on higher education is likely to discourage people from applying. So, I don't think we can rely on projections of increase in the size of the university. Well, that's good, because the town has requested they hold it flat. But have you considered that it might shrink? Remember, there are a lot of foreign students who attend VT. And the other prong of the administration's war on higher education is getting rid of foreign students. This could all become clear in a year or two, but it's not clear now. If the developer wants to take the risk and incur losses if things go south, that's a developer's business decision. However, if the town of Blacksburg is left, is left with a development which is either not finished, or occupied but not fully occupied, or left with a bunch of other housing units that are of low quality on the periphery and now all of a sudden vacated by students, all of those things are issues for the town of Blacksburg. I don't think you have enough information to approve a project of this magnitude at this time. Now, I know you've already approved most of it, but my, I would encourage you to do everything possible to slow this project down until there's more clarity. Again, I'm not speaking against the project, I'm certainly not speaking against students, and I'm thinking of the long-term interest and stability of the town of Blacksburg, and I do not think at the present time, this will contribute to that. Thank you very much.
Any additional public comment on this public hearing? Do applicant like to exercise rebuttal to the public comment?
You know, I don't know that I have a rebuttal to our, you know, current government stance, but, you know, there are several things that we have done in the past. One of them is looking at student-developed units and how they can be subdivided to create multifamily units. That's something we look at on every project. It's not necessarily something we've ever had to implement, but we do feel like it's an appropriate step in our industry.
All right. We've heard, from staff, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'm of approval of RZN 25 dash three, the rezoning amendment request to RZN 24 dash two, as well as the right-of-way vacation request 25 dash one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Well, I'd like to say something. So, when the original proposal came before the planning commission and then ultimately council, I opposed the redevelopment on the grounds that I had hoped that maybe they'd come down a little on height and density, which would solve a lot of our concerns with the parking and, and, but, but, but they held firm in their request, and so I didn't support it at either level, but it was supported strongly in the planning commission, and the council passed it by a very close vote. What's before us tonight, the way I look at it, is not, we're not relitigating whether this building should be here or not. That, that conversation was done. What really is before us tonight is, does what was already approved and stand make sense to incorporate where that gas station was, which, you know, it was unfortunate that it wasn't available to y'all from the beginning. But be that as it may, this is where we are tonight, and that's really where I'm coming from, is, does this make sense? Does this addition make sense, land use-wise, everything? And so, so for that reason, I, I am going to support it, because that's the question, the fundamental question. I will say, I do like even numbers, and I appreciate the mythology, mythology that you use to do the affordable housing thing. But, you know, rounding it up to a nice even 1.3 or even 1.5, I'm sure would make-
There you go, Jerry.
Would, 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 would make me feel a lot better, and maybe some other people too.
Oh, boy. Yes. Well, there's nothing to stop them from just giving to the Housing Trust Fund as good neighbors that they will be, you know, for the next 20 years.
Or 30 or 50?
Or, or 30, or, you know, I have a colleague that says, you know, whenever we're making decisions up here, we're actually making 100-year decisions, because in the US, we like to keep our buildings around. And, and I think one of the greatest positive externalities we get from this development is the redevelopment of very old infrastructure in this area, that in order to sustain the cost of that, it needs to be a large development that can make a fair amount of money. That's sort of an understatement, a fair amount of money. But I also will reiterate that I, I like the fact that we're adding the, the townhomes here, though the university is somewhat at risk at the near term, I do not anticipate that that will continue in the long term. So, I, I feel comfortable, you know, especially given now we've gone through, since I've been studying housing, I would say three big housing shocks. And Virginia, and especially places where demand is concentrated, has, have been very resilient to any kind of shock like that. And, and so I feel confident that though some housing may suffer from, you know, temporary university shrinkage, for example, it would probably not be this housing, but rather other, other housing that's further afield or less quality, et cetera. I'm excited for, for this development. I think it sets a good precedent, and I'm so excited that you guys got the Speedway, because I just thought that was going to be a wonderful, I saw her in the front of this building. So, it's good, it's good.
Any further comment or discussion on this public hearing? All right, we have a motion on the table, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, great. All right, we'll move on now to our citizen comment period. This is an opportunity to speak to the commission on any topic, be it tonight's public hearing or any other issues. Seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. Zoning ordinance and review committee, we have not met. Historic or design review board, our representative is not present tonight. Montgomery County Planning Commission?
So, the May meeting, I may have just watched it today. As it turns out, they didn't have any public hearings, so it was a very brief meeting, but then they moved into a work session. They talked a little bit about something that, that will be coming before them this month, which is kind of, there is a by right clean or inert fill, I don't want to say landfill, that's not the appropriate term, even though I'm kind of drawn to use that term, and they're wanting to expand it. It's, it's in the county adjacent to the town of Christiansburg. So, they talked a little bit about that in work session and, and talked about what they needed. And then the bulk of their work session was talking about their comp plan development, and that went on for quite some time. So, that's what I have to report for the May planning commission.
Thank you. Any additional items from planning commissioners? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to new business, chairs report. I have non-funding director's report, non-town council report.
So, today at the town council meeting, we were presented with a speed study that had to do with, with Prices Fork Road. There was a horrible accident a month or so ago, and we're already moving forward with dropping speed limits in certain areas of the town. And so, staff presented a lot of interesting findings about what's going on, basically from Old Glade Road to the traffic circle. And I guess one of the great things was, or surprising things as it said, was that there was a lot more pedestrians and a lot more bicyclists, especially in, in certain interaction space. And so, all those things are going to be used as reasons for us to drop the speed limit through there. We're trying to do it in the summer so that we can get everyone on, on board when the students come back, so we will be trying to drop the speed limit.
As early as this summer?
Yeah, it will, the process will be started. We, I mean, we've got to go through a formal process, and then there's the physical part of actually putting the signs and changing all of that. And then also, I just, I wanted to bring something up, because Mr., our citizen who's comments and comments, well, he comes for all the CIP and the financial stuff, gives us good comments, we appreciate your input. He spoke in front of council a week ago and talked about some of our housing concerns that we're dealing with in town. And he, our, our town attorney listened to the comments and just kind of advised council, and I just wanted to tell you what, what he brought up, is that, you know, at town council level, as well as the planning commission level, you know, we're here to, you know, to consider these rezoning petitions. And as, as disgusted or concerned with external things that are happening in our community that affect what the decisions we make, we can't really, we, we have to consider those honestly and with the, the spirit of the law process and people's rights. And so, you know, even though we know there's all this concern and drama, we have to continue to do our work based on just good, sound land use decisions, which I think we do. I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. All right, and on that, with that, and on that note, we stand adjourned. Thank you.